Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, October 14th, 2025. We're meeting today at 6:30 PM in the Harry Boater Selectmen's Chambers at the Norwood Town Hall, 566 Washington Street in Nord, Massachusetts. Before we get started with our agenda tonight, I'd like to begin with a moment of silent reflection after we do a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we have a couple of appointments, some items of new business. So we'll go ahead and try to knock out some of the simple items first before our first appointment. So why don't we start with item number one, which is the warrant signature update for notification of reviewed and approved warrants signed by the board's representative? Do I have a motion?
To accept and file?
Motion made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Lane. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, unanimous. Item number two, this is meaning minutes for approval of the board from September 9th.
Move for approval of the meeting minutes.
Motion made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Plasko. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, unanimous. I'm going to drop down to the consent agenda. I'll go through and the usual procedure will list the items and if there's an item that somebody wants to discuss, just call hold and I'll pull it aside. So consent agenda, item 5.1.1, sign placements by St. Catherine's. Item 5.2.1, this is town common use for wedding photos. I'm going to put a hold on item 5.2.2, which is town common request for youth climate coalition event. Item 5.3, cemetery deeds. Item 5.4.1, this is a road race from St. Catherine's. And item 5.5.1, this is a educational PSA mailers from DPW on storm water. Do I have a motion on those items?
Motion approved.
Motion made by Mr. Sad, approve items 5.1 down through 5.5 with the exception of 5.2.2. All in favor. Oh, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Donnelly, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. All right. Did pretty good on that. Why don't we go down to memoranda?
I'll make a motion to approve and file. Memoranda?
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Plasko. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, unanimous. All right. Since we have, and I think if we can get the discussion done before the first appointment, I'm going to pull up 5.2.2, which is that town common request. So this was a request we got for an event on the common, but when we looked into it, the applicant doesn't have a tie to Norwood. They're not a resident, they're not a former resident, they're not, we couldn't find any link. And our common policy around these kinds of permits, we're looking for there to be a Norwood connection for the, for the, either a resident, a business, or a nonprofit. And so I wanted to pull that one out of the lineup to call that out and see what the board's thought would be around that.
Motion to deny.
Okay. Motion to deny made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Sad. Any further discussion?
I just had a question.
Sure.
I couldn't tell what this was. Just lick from our packet. What is it?
It's like a student group from, the kid goes to school font bond, lives in Braintree. They wanted to do a student youth event and they picked Norwood because it's centrally located.
Okay.
So it's, it's high school kids, but it's also, there doesn't appear to be a connection to, to Norwood.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, they're generally, the group that they're part of has a wider footprint. I've seen them active in other areas in the Commonwealth. So they're not an unknown group. But, and the intent was they were essentially wanting to get other people together for one of the activities they have, which is the, I don't remember what they call it.
That was confusing. They called it a make polluters?
Make polluters pay.
Pay.
That's the...
Looks like it says day, like make polluters.
Yeah, that's, we had, we had a question.
I'm against that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, got it.
Yes, the intent is not to create a pollution day, it's the opposite.
Okay.
So, any further questions? All right, seeing none. We've already had motion made and seconded, so all in favor of denial, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, unanimous. All right, we have maybe four-ish minutes left, so...
Gentlemen's.
Yeah, we're able to start really, because it's not a public hearing, correct?
Correct.
All right, but if they're here, let's go ahead and bring them in. Welcome.
Hello.
Good, how are you? Have a seat. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome. Well, thank you for coming to see us tonight.
Thank you for here.
For the benefit of the public record, we just want to go ahead and have you introduce yourselves.
Yeah, my name is Abraham Mawatt. I am the owner for Royal Pizza. And open, right now, we're going to open the ice cream store than at the same plaza. It's 1001 Boston Providence Highway.
My name is Kresh. So I'm a working partner at 947 Restaurant. So the thing I'm here is because he want to sell his business to shut. So what was happening is I just want to say the little bit story. So he's been applying permit from last January. So I think it's April, May, June time, he decided that because of his financial circumstances, he said he want to sell it. So that is when we came on the board. We are the next neighbor to him. So that's why I'm here. So part of the, this meeting.
Excellent. All right. And then the board has all the application material. So I believe I'm going to go ahead and move to questions from the board. Mr. Sad.
Is this in Royal Pizza?
Yep. I'm not say Royal Pizza. I am the owner for Royal Pizza.
It's the next one.
Next door, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I just didn't know, it just said Royal Pizza.
Yeah, no, that's, it was Royal Creamery.
Good, good.
Yeah.
Congratulations, welcome.
Thanks so much.
Other questions, Mr. Plasko?
Yeah, I have some questions. I'm concerned about the paperwork, confused by the paperwork. We have it here that it's Royal Creamery.
Yep.
But signs on the building, quality ice cream.
Yep.
The insurance certificate is to an Ohm Ice Cream. Who's who?
So I'll explain that. So...
Are you a collaborator? Are you doing business as?
No. In the beginning, I was running the business after everything under Royal Creamery. But for some reason, because I take long time, here in, the application takes long time here in the building and everywhere, since January, I'm not able to afford to continue. My, my neighbor, he gonna take over, still of me, he bought his name and everything and to run the business. I'm not able to continue that business at this time.
So who's the applicant? You are?
He's my neighbor, yes.
Okay, so you're the applicant.
So the thing is, he's the applicant. So his company name is Royal...
Who's the applicant?
Sorry, he's the applicant.
I am the applicant. I am the file, the file, and everything in the beginning, under Royal Creamery.
From the original application?
Yes. For some reason, because I, I applied since January for, to open.
This is a franchise, correct?
Before is not. Right now, it gonna be franchise.
Not the pizza shop, we talked about their...
Yes, the ice cream, yes. In, in the, when I start, it's not franchise. I start everything, my own business. But the application, it take here in the town hall since January, until today, the application is not run, is not finished. I'm not able to get the rent and fix some stuff in the...
What application you talking about?
The building permit.
The building permit?
Inspector, some time getting them.
Yes, it takes long time. But during that time, I had some issue. My brother passed away. I spent all my money. I'm not able to finish the store. That's why the neighbor he gonna take over, he run the business, he buy the business for me. He gonna open, I'm not opening the business at this time.
So I think he might...
You should be applying, not him. You're the one that wants to be licensed.
Yeah, so I think he might be a little bit, maybe, so I'll try to explain. So his company name is Royal Creamery. So initially, he made the application. So what was happened is, since he was not able to complete it, so we took over it as a mutual, like verbally, on a verbal basis. So then we completed the project. As you mentioned, the Ohm Ice Cream is our corporation name, and the Quality Norwood is a franchise, so which we got it from the New Jersey. So right now, since, I mean, like I've approached the town, so we just wanted to apply in our name, but because since he was the initial applicant, it will be a complex, it is better, you apply the application in his name, after he get the permission, you transfer it. So that is the reason why we made the application in his name. So as soon as this is done, so I've got all the documents.
Then you're going to have to come in for that.
Yes, I'm going to come for the next board meeting.
Oh, I think a lot of the, like the board of health paperwork and the building permits are all under his name. So he's 95% of the way there and saying, can I get the last permit so I can then transfer?
You're ready to, I think you're ready to open October 15th. It's what you signed, so that's why you plan to open.
Yes, after we got the permit, everything, after under my name, then we got transferred everything under his name.
I think he's just being transparent that somebody else is going to be running the business. They just, they've gotten so close to it. If they have applied for this...
My concern is, I work down the street, down, down the road, and I'm concerned, God forbid, to some reason, that somebody has to sue. Some customer gets injured, poisoned, whatever, and they come after the establishment. They come after the town because they say you don't even know who you permitted, because we have different documents with different names on them. So I want to make sure we have all the paperwork
Yes.
in the right order, so we know who we're doing business with. The place looks great.
Yes.
You want to run a nice business down there. I looked it up online, it sounds very tasty and interesting. But from this seat, I want everything done right, so that we don't have to, any, thing go wrong in the future. And so who's Ohm?
So it's our corporation name, Ohm Ice Cream Inc.
Ohm Ice Cream.
Inc., that's the corporation name.
That's Inc. Yes, I N C.
And that's your insurance? Yes.
Yeah, again, if you think of a health permit that's been approved...
This is all messed up.
Rather than go back through that entire process, complete the process, the permit gets issued to the gentleman from Royal Pizza, he's turning it right over to his partner who's going to run all the business in...
Right, but under, again, getting technical, under 140 to give the common vehicles license, they have to have insurance. We can't give him the license, he doesn't have the insurance.
He does, he's using his, he's using his insurance.
Even I have, I have the quote, if I sign it today, it gonna, the insurance gonna works under my name. I can't do that. I got good.
His insurance.
That's his insurance. But I still, I have insurance in my phone right now. I can't sign it, electronic sign, and I got the policy today.
But I'm looking at what was submitted to me. What I have submitted to me is, doesn't match any of the other paperwork.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, I agree. So the insurance page is under your company's name. It would be cleaner if it were under yours.
Yeah.
So I'd be willing to approve with the condition that you provide insurance paperwork under your name for the same premises, which I assume you have now, since you've been doing renovations, et cetera. But I think Mr. Plasko's right, that's confusing.
Yeah, because you'd have a technical gap.
Send it by email.
And you know you're going to have to come in technically. Small thing, but we have to prove it to you.
I think it was a little bit confusion. We just thought to do everything in our name, just only because he was doing the application from January. So we don't want to create any confusion with the board or anything like that. That is the reason why. So that insurance, like if it was, like it would have got us a little bit complex issue, I would have got it in his name itself.
Yeah.
So I think that's, if you want, I can...
Yeah, I mean, it, it's going over there, so I think it's just a matter of trying to do it in process.
They're all simple little things, but they all need to be done properly. Like, he filed for the business certificate. Or if you are going to be running a different business, you need a different business certificate.
Yeah, I'm going to do, I'm going to do all that process.
Running the business, in case the fire police, anyone needs to contact the owner. Right now, we've got everything in his name.
Okay.
Right. But you have all the right sign-offs from the board of health inspector.
Yep.
Correct. That's great. It's just easier to finish the process and then transfer everything than try to do it any other way.
Yeah, I think if we can get the insurance updated, because that to me is the concerning one, is you don't want to have a gap where it's like, oh, but the insurance wasn't for this person, it was for that person. Like, if we can get that settled, that would clear up a lot of it for me. And I understand the intent. The intent is you're like, I'm going to take this last bit, get it across the finish line, and then this other entity is going to take over essentially.
So to Mr. Lane's point, you could approve it contingent on him providing insurance up into the transfer.
Further questions on it besides the insurance and the, the nature of how it's flowing?
So the insurance certificate that you would supply would be one that's specific to Royal Creamery?
Sure.
Okay. So that would be a specific motion, Mr. Lane, I assume?
Yes. It would be, we don't have to close this, right? It's not a public hearing. A motion to approve contingent upon providing insurance in your current business's name for that address, with the assumption that it would be transferred over afterwards. Great.
I'll second Mr. Lane's motion.
Okay, motion to approve conditional upon submission of that insurance made by Mr. Lane and seconded by Mr. Donnelly. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. All right, so make sure you get a set paperwork.
And we'll see you soon.
And then we'll see you very soon. Happy to have you.
Good luck.
It's okay.
As long as we get it straightened out, we're not going to give you a hard time. Like I say, I'm waiting, can't wait to get down there.
Please. Good luck. Thank you. All right, so that brings us to item 3.2. If the chiefs are here...
Yeah, I can grab them.
Bring them in.
I was confused.
Hello.
How's everybody?
Good, how are you? Hanging in there?
I just said I didn't work that hard.
I'll come. Thanks for coming to see us tonight. As usual, for the benefit of the public record, we'll have you introduce yourselves.
Do you want to go first?
Sure.
All right. I kind of stuck him with it.
Good evening, Tim Bailey, Fire Chief. In the, in the last month or so since I was in, 5,762 emergency calls. That's the average result, about 20.1 per day, compared to last year when we were at 5,515. So there's about a 250 increase in runs to date this year. Fire prevention, 5103, and total calls for service of 10,865 to date. Mutual aid, which is the, the big number that always kind of stands out, is at 719 for the year. 193 times that we've given mutual aid out, and we've received it 526 times. Over the last month, we were working on the ambulance certified public expenditure program, CPE program, which is, an ambulance is a Medicaid funding mechanism that allows government-run ambulance services to receive supplemental payments by certifying public funds they have spent on services to Medicaid members. The process enables the state to claim a federal Medicaid match for those certified expenditures, which in turn allows public ambulance providers to receive additional funding to cover the gap between the actual costs and what Medicaid typically pays. This was very intensive program that we spent a lot of time on. My business manager, Ann Harrington, and my, one of my EMS coordinators, Lieutenant Mike Chisholm, spent about a week's worth of time compiling all this information. It was both in-house through our ambulance provider and also with the help of other offices and town, town departments. We standard receive a substantial amount of money back from that. So that has been submitted. The deadline was tomorrow. We submitted it last Thursday, and we'll, we'll wait to see how that transpires, and I'll keep you up to date as we move forward with that. The apparatus floor project, which is finally completed, they finished this morning. They were out of the, the station. It looks great, and we still can't drive on it until Thursday. But we are able to utilize and walk across the floor now, and we put the poles back into service. So we're able to get down and, and they're able to get, they're geared up now inside as opposed to outside in the weather. So a couple more days and then we'll be all back to normal with that. The HREC buildout, which is the regional communications, that continues. We are working with Moderna right now to get one of our antennas up there. That'll leave one more site that we have to get an antenna up on. We're still in process with that, and hopefully that comes to be. If it doesn't, we'll have to look for an alternative site. But right now, that, that's heading in the right direction. Training for the month of September was area operations and safety failed by ladder pipe operations, where we extend the ladder truck up and we flow water out of that. That's what we call ladder pipe operations. And then October, they have been going down to FM and familiar, familiarizing themselves with the new structure down there. So some of the groups still haven't made it down there, but that's what we're in process doing as of this month.
Great.
I'll take any questions.
How about the floor?
What about it? It looks great.
Are we in?
We will be in on Thursday.
Oh, good. Finally.
Yes.
Well overdue, way overdue.
Yes, it, it took a long time, but we're, we're happy with the finished product. So hopefully it lasts for a long time.
Excellent. Further questions? Mr. Sad.
Chief, I just want to, I got a call from a resident that the ambulance came to their house and pulled them out and brought them to one of the local hospitals. And they just want to say how excited and supportive and a professional job and the help that you gave that person. So the ambulance crew, anybody else, congratulations once again.
Thank you.
Yeah. Other questions?
Thank you.
And just always extreme gratitude to the team. I know it's really, really hard with the hospital name down, so we're just very grateful. And just keep hanging in there, and we'll keep working to try to get that hospital back up.
Thank you.
All right, Chief, we switch over to you.
Good evening, Chris Patton, Chief of Police here in Norwood. I just want to talk about some grants that we were able to just recently obtain. We got a $15,000 grant for traffic enforcement, which we usually get every year, which is great. It's an opportunity to get us out there. And, and that grant will usually require us to do certain types, hands-free, pedestrian, and we'll concentrate on those various areas. It's a great grant. We, we really do a lot of traffic enforcement in order to try and keep the public safe as far as that goes. That's, that's the goal between tra, behind traffic enforcement. We got the Edward Brine Memorial Grant for $20,000 worth of equipment. We're in the process of working on some bids to buy some gear that we needed, so that we don't have to go to the budget for that or come to capital. So it's, it's a great grant. With, over the years, I think the year before, we got $40,000 on that, and then $50,000 the year before. So that grant's, we've been very, very fortunate with that grant. And then in conjunction with DPW, Mark Ryan and his crew, we were able to get the Maya Grant to get some new barriers, movable barriers for events. So DPW will buy them and own them. We talked about this a ways back. We need better systems in place to block roads for things like Norwood Day. I mean, we, right now, we use DPW trucks and water-filled barriers, and they're just not efficient. These new barriers are lightweight, they move around, and they'll actually stop a large vehicle from getting into a pedestrian area. So super important for public safety as far as those types of things, when we deal with that. Wrapping up the strategic plan that we started months ago, it seems like. It was a long process. We hope to publish it in November. We'll put it out to the, internally and to the selectmen before we publish that publicly. It's just a, basically a plan where the police department wants to go, what it is we're trying to do. Everything we focused on, we tried to have minimum, minimal budget impacts. So just things like training that we can do without it costing the town money. That was really our goal. We have two new hires that are jumping into field training now. That will put us fully staffed, which is the first time we've been fully staffed in quite a while, because our rotation to get somebody in, and then through the academy, or if it's a lateral tran, transfer through FTO, it's a long process. So it'd be really nice, by the first of the year, we should, we should be up to speed, unless something else, unless another shoe drops on us. So we got a lot of high-profile investigations that we're working right now. We had the shootings a couple weeks ago. We're working on those diligently. Detective Bureau's really on top of that. They also just wrapped up a nine-count fentanyl case for trafficking. You know, that's one of our biggest priorities, is getting drugs off the street, and, and that was really a, a great, a great case. We had a retiree lunch for all the retired police officers this past week. It was, and I want to thank the Norwood Masonic Lodge for sponsoring that. They're very good. It brings in all the officers that have retired over the years and that are still around and, you know, thousands of years worth of, you know, police experience in the room. It's a great opportunity for us to kind of keep our guys in, in the loop with what's going on. And so the older generation, the newer generation, it's, I think, a, a good culture thing for the police department itself. We had coffee with a cop at the senior center. That was great success. Always, we appreciate being invited up there. We just completed our fall range qualifications. All of our police officers every year have to go through a couple times a year to qualify with handguns and rifles. We just completed that. Thank you to Medfield for letting us use their range. And then obviously, same, same thing that we've been doing every day since forever, is our officers are in the community, talking to the public, and just trying to really, you know, be part of the community. Statistically, at this point in the year, we're, our arrests, at this time last year, were up by 34. Our citations are up by 702. I think that's a lot, because we've been focused on traffic enforcement, you know, changing the public's behavior. And when I say citations, that could be a warning. That doesn't necessarily mean it's a money fine. You know, it's just as effective to give somebody a written warning, explain the reason that you're there, as it is to write a money fine. And what'll happen is, you know, hopefully that person will think twice, you know, if they're speeding through somebody else's neighborhood, as, you know, treat it the same way they treat their own neighborhood. And then accidents, accidents are running about the same. We're up by 39. So our numbers are consistently up year over, year over year. It doesn't mean that at the end of the year that they, that they won't be, but we're still very busy, and we're trying to tackle everything that comes our way, and still, you know, be a big part of the community.
Excellent. When's the, because I've lost track of the schedule, when's the next coffee opportunity?
I don't know off the top of my head, I'm sorry, but I can, I can get back to you on that.
Great, thank you. Well, I will open it up to other questions, comments from the board. Mr. Don?
Thank you, thank you. The citations, the traffic citations, are they mostly, I'm assuming they're mostly speeding, or, or do you see a trend with other?
It, it can be everything. So, so we have certain areas that we try and go after. Speeding is, is a safety issue. Red light violations is another one. You see down on Route 1, you'll see a lot of times, people will, you know, take that stale yellow light, instead of slowing down, they'll go through it. It, it really depends on, on what the officer's focusing on. Certainly with the grants, a lot of times, it's crosswalk enforcement or handheld. So it really depends.
And just one more, the, the two new hires from the police academy, or they transferred in from other?
We got two laterals. One is a gentleman from Braintree that was down south, working at a police department down there, and wanted to come back this way, fully trained. So he'll, we'll get him on the road quicker. And the other one is from Michigan. His wife was from here, and they just moved back here. So once again, we'll be able to get them on the road quicker, which is very helpful for us.
Thank you, Chief.
This is not another police academy, I think, for quite a while, and then that would, you know, put us out even further.
Okay. And you're fully staffed now, so hopefully not going to worry.
That's what we're hoping.
Thank you.
Mr. Sad?
I love, Chief, I use the word tackle, because those are our coach, oh, coach days. None of those.
Yeah.
I know you're doing a great job. You're under a lot of stress with all these incidents in Norwood, so keep up the great job.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Chief. Just wanted to recognize, I just was copying on an email earlier in the year about Winter Street and Prospect and that crosswalk and a lot of the kids that are walking to school. And I know that Patrolman Rooney paid special attention to that. They've made some stops, and I, I think that they've done a really good job in making sure that people stop there. So just much appreciation for that.
Yeah, we're very concerned about that. These pedestrian accidents are, you know, there's so much distraction out there, it's very dangerous, and it doesn't take much to really hurt somebody very badly in a pedestrian accident.
Yeah, and just with the school times, and so, thank you for the added presence.
Happy to do it.
Any other questions, comments?
Now, he got my fentanyl guy, what's the chances he's not going to go through a revolving door?
Well, it's a pretty good case. It's a nine-count trafficking case. I don't want to talk about it too much, but... want to talk about it too much, but, um, it's a good case. They did, they did, it's good police.
Too much not just here or everywhere that just, you're at your ends, people doing their job. We get to the courts and they, they home before you are, you know?
It does happen.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
The, uh, only other thing I wanted to ask about was, uh, this is more just a checkpoint. Um, things are still going good with homework? Everything is still working good at call centers? No complaints? Everything's?
Um, from the police department's perspective, I mean, every issues that we would have had with our own dispatch center, we, we still have there. I mean, you know, trying to bring up new people, um, there are a few challenges. Um, you know, knowing the person on the other end, whereas if we would walk into the dispatch area and see that person, you, you get, you get that, um, familiarity that you don't really have when somebody's just a voice on the other end. So what we had tried to do was to bring some of those folks out to do ride-alongs, to see the town, so that they could understand some of that. Uh, we still have some issues, and I don't know if the fire department runs into it, but we still have issues that our old database has, um, areas that are not correct. And when you go to fix them, uh, the computer system, you know, you could change it and then it goes back. So, instead of sending the A car, we send the B car and then the officers get a little frustrated. So that's, that's frustrating. Um, the radio system, um, is hopefully we're going to be switching over to a digital system, which will clean up some things. Uh, one of the things that came through today, and I don't know if you ended up seeing this, but, um, they're doing some fiber optic, uh, splicing at the station and hopefully they're going to splice in Foxborough and some of those other areas. So it'll give us a little bit of a better range. Um, you know, that's been a big help, uh, the better system. And like I said, the town would have had to spend nine million dollars plus to, to get what we got. So, um, so I think that was beneficial. But, you know, it, for the most part, I, I think it's going well. Um, there are challenges, like there are challenges that, and, and we, and we take them on and fix them and fix problems as they come up.
Great. Awesome. All right. Well, then with that, I think we can let both of you out for the evening. Thanks so much for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Always a pleasure.
Have a great night.
You as well.
You too.
All right. We are a little early, but if Mr. White is in the hall and is ready to come see us, we can go ahead and get started a little early.
Let's let him wait.
Make him wait?
Come on, Sam.
Or we can just bask in his presence for an extra five minutes.
Good evening, good evening.
Good evening, welcome.
Chair members of board, nice to see you all.
Good to see you as well.
Absolutely. I'm Sam White. I'm the Recreation Director. Uh, yeah, Recreation Director of the Norwood Recreation Department. So happy to be here this evening. Yes, thank you.
Excellent. All right, we'll go ahead and get started and we'll go from there.
All right, sounds good. So, I, I mean, it's been a little bit since I've been here. So, you know, we had a busy summer. Of course, got through Norwood Day and everything. So I just want to, um, say thank you for all your support, uh, getting through Norwood Day. It was a fantastic day, uh, all, all the way around. Uh, we did have a great summer, um, through all of our programs. Obviously opening up the new Haas Pool, um, saw a great turnout. Um, you know, obviously we, we, we opened up halfway through the summer, but saw great numbers from, from start to finish. And obviously it was a hot summer. So, it was glad, it was really good to see, um, residents enjoying the pool. And, um, it's a big shout out to our, our staff, our lifeguards, counselors, uh, all of our summer staff. They did a great job this summer. Um, it was a seamless summer and we're happy, happy to invite them back next year and, and can't wait for, for round two. So, we're enjoying that. Um, we are actually also, we're still, we're on the prowl for lifeguards currently because we have to be, we always will be. Um, so we're looking forward to that. We're, we're upping our efforts and, uh, and retaining some more lifeguards for next year, um, starting now. Um, just jumping into what we have going on now, uh, Marie Kid's been doing a great job with our Fall Fest, uh, activities. We just wrapped up our pumpkin float on Saturday. Uh, great turnout, hundreds of, uh, participants that came through. Uh, we had smores. We linked up with the Trails Committee, so they led trails through Rendeen Park. Um, of course, had the pumpkin float. We had, um, Friends For The Memories, uh, who is usually stationed at Went Smith Bill. He was doing burgers and hot dogs. So, it was a great night, great event, always is. Um, and we're looking forward to what's to come, uh, which we do have our SOCOP event, which is coming up on October twenty-third at the Senior Center. Um, so it's more for younger ones, uh, just to get them out, get in the, get in the Halloween spirit with, uh, with some of our seniors here in Norwood. Um, and then following that, we do have our trunk or treat, which is in the municipal lot here at Town Hall. Um, always a fan favorite. We can't wait for that. Uh, we do ask for either a dollar donation or a canned good. All proceeds do go to the Norwood Food Pantry. Um, and then following that, we're actually doing a new event and it's called Halloween. So, trying to hit a different demographic, but it's for folks with, uh, with dogs. We are, uh, partnering with some, uh, local Norwood businesses so they can go and actually have their dog trick or treat. So, should be a fun event, something, something new, something new. So, we're hoping that it takes off.
Very neat.
Absolutely. But no, all is well at the Civic. Uh, you know, everyone's happy. We, we just refinished our, uh, our floors down in the Fitness Center. So we have brand-new floors, um, and everyone's coming in. They're having a good time, working out, staying healthy. So, all is well.
Great. Uh, what I will likely do, uh, if you are willing to indulge me, is I may have you, after we get done with our questions, stick around a little extra for, uh, some of our discussion on field fees.
Yes, that'd be great. Yes, absolutely.
Awesome. So, if you're prepared for that. Um, and then I had two questions before I, uh, turn over to other board members. Uh, one is, I had a question, uh, about the, there's a benefit for active-duty military at the REC Center. I believe it's for the Fitness Center?
Correct.
Um, and a question that I got asked about was, but if they're active-duty, are they here to actually utilize it? And would it make more sense for it to be a veteran benefit?
So, I, I believe it is labeled active-duty, but it is active in veterans. So, it, it is combined.
Ah, okay. So it's combined. Okay, well, good. All right. And then my second question was, um, when I was looking at, uh, our field fees in general, most of them are hourly, but there were one or two that were on a per-player basis. Do, do you have any insights on what is the parameter that sort of determines when we would want to go per-player versus hourly?
Correct. Yeah, that's a great question. So in that breakdown, um, that you, you see, um, so for single days, we do do per hour, um, just given the circumstance. But for over the reoccurring use, we do, and you can notice the, uh, per-player is only for Norwood youth groups. So basically, it's where you have, you know, Norwood youth soccer, where, you know, they host over four hundred kids versus, you know, Norwood field hockey, which could be under a hundred kids. So that, that per-player makes it more even across the board versus if it was just a one-day use or over a month span or a few weeks. They're not paying the same thing with, with less income.
Okay, that makes sense. All right, thank you. Thank you for the clarification. All right, with that, since you gave me all of the delicious fall updates I was looking for already.
Of course, of course.
Um, I'll turn it over to the board for questions, comments. We'll start with Mr. Sad.
I want to say, Sam, every time you come here, you're smiling more than me. You bring happiness to this town.
I try.
Uh, one, thank you for a great Norwood Day. Everything was perfect. The rally and the Norwood Day went perfect, other than the weather at three o'clock. And, um, get your fishing stuff ready. I'm ordering the fish in about, oh, two months.
That's right. It's coming up. It's going to be there before we know it.
But congratulations on all you do. You just keep winning and I, and I just love you so much because of the way you come across and, uh, keep control of the Rec Department and everything seems like it's working on, on all cylinders.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mr. Donald?
I'll leave Mr. Lane.
Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for being here. Thank you for all you do. Well, we have you here. I know that you have, uh, a few CPA applications in-
Correct.
-from the Rec Department. If you wanted to take the opportunity to talk a little bit about them?
Yeah, most definitely. Yeah, absolutely. So I'll start out with, um, the, um, the Father Max Playground. So we did put in an application for, um, a hundred thousand dollars, um, which would be replacing the, uh, existing wood chips that we would be putting down as surfacing, whether that's going to be the turf material like you see at, uh, the new Tyler J Lawrence Park or, um, poured rubber, which is at Bonspree and, uh, Murphy Playground. Um, so basically we did get a quote, um, and it did come over, well over, um, a hundred thousand. But with, working with DPW, they would do a lot of the labor, a lot of the work. This would mainly just be the installing fee. Since it is a bigger playground, um, it is a higher price tag, but, um, we think it's more worthwhile. Um, obviously it would be more accessible for all to use. And that's just the trend in playgrounds right now. Playgrounds aren't being built with wood chips anymore.
This is, excuse me, this is just where the swings and slides are?
Correct, yeah.
Just in that area and it's, and it's that much money?
Well, no, I'm sorry. It would be the whole playground. We would do the whole playground.
What do you mean by the whole playground?
The whole playground would be surfaced in this material, whether it's poured rubber or turf.
So what's grass now would have this?
What's, uh, wood chips right now would have this.
It's a whole wooden area, not just like right underneath the swing sets, that whole wooden area off.
Right, well, there's, there's like a, um, curbing around it.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah.
You're just going to be within that.
Correct, yes. Oh, yes.
And it comes to that kind of money.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Typically, I mean, from, so from installation, it'll be about seventy-three thousand, but then with the DPW labor, and they would put in the nail board, which is just basically the border around, and it would be concrete. Um, it would come out to roughly a hundred thousand. Yeah, when it's all said and done.
And my question was, this is fine that you've identified doing this and we're trying to keep the, the property up and everything safe and so forth. But if that's our concern, why aren't we doing something with our playing field?
That's, that's next. That, that whole area in general, that, that is certainly in the, in the target zone.
Cause that's probably the worst one in town.
Absolutely. Oh, I agree. I agree.
So why aren't we including it now?
Yeah, that's it.
You just don't want to ask for too much or what?
Yeah, I didn't, yeah, I didn't want to kind of jump the gun on that one, but I agree. I mean, it needs, it needs to be addressed.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Lane?
That's it, thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Uh, Mr. Donald, anything?
Sure. Um, you know, you have a, a great talent for planning these events for beautiful days.
Sometimes. We gotta knock out wood now.
So keep up, keep up the, um, um, the Haas Pool, that I see, looks great. You got a cap, which is great.
Correct, yes.
Um, I think the dirt pile is being removed.
It is, yes. If I'm not mistaken, I might have, I think they picked the rest up today. Yeah.
The, um, I, I think I've talked to you about this before. You, you informed me about this. So, um, the Haas Pool, you have the pool and you have the splash pad. Uh, is there opportunity, uh, down the line from recreation perspective where the splash, splash pad can be used when the pool is not open?
Yes, absolutely. And that's what, we, we didn't do it this year, but that is our goal going forward for next year. So on the outside right now, um, you see that we do have, um, the fence bordering the splash pad towards Washington Street. It is lower. We're actually going to be raising that higher so that we can have people go in and out. We'll, we'll have someone stationed there, um, throughout, throughout the days. That'll be later in the season, once the pool officially closes. And then you, no one will be allowed on the deck, of course, when the splash pad is only open.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Plasko?
Thank you. I have a concern about the pool and things are always changing. So since I was down there, you might have already taken care of this, but when you go down the side where you have some, um, uh, stands for people to watch the swim meets?
Yep.
Is there anything at the backside of those bleachers? Because when I was there, I'm just waiting for somebody to get hurt.
It's a good question. No.
And not only to get pushed to the ground, but there's a big gully right there.
Right, absolutely.
And that's, that's pretty dangerous.
It is, it is. And that's something that we pointed out. And, um, I know me, myself and, uh, Mr. Weinstein, we were, we were talking about either installing different bleachers that would have a backstop or something to put there so people cannot fall off. Because we, we noticed that as well, as soon as it was happening.
We can't leave it the way it is. It's too much of a liability.
Agreed, agreed.
Not only the, somebody being hurt, we don't want anybody hurt.
Right, absolutely. Yeah. No, when, when we, we, we noticed the same exact thing as, as soon as it was going. Yeah, thank you.
And why are you so easy on these people?
Huh?
They don't like to collect money?
Yeah, it's a, uh, yeah, slow incline. I mean, it's been a few years, so.
That's fine, thank you. Just easy there.
With that, um, if there's no further questions for Mr. White that are, uh, on other topics, do we want to go ahead and get into the discussion on fees?
Sure. We'll talk about fees and the two applications for CPC funds.
I was going to say, I did have the other one. It's a joint, um, application with DPW. Correct, yeah.
And the CPC applications are, 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 per information. We're not, they're not going on until they've gone, they're not going to town meeting until they've been vetted from CPC and so forth, so.
Correct, yeah. And these are just the pre-applications.
We have to sign off.
Yes, understood.
Um, any questions on, or discussion on the fees?
Just one. Um, look, going forward, can we, can look, maybe come up with a system where we're looking at it a little more frequently than twelve years?
Most definitely, yeah. Our, our goal was to do, um, almost like an every, every three-year track, if not sooner or, you know, but, uh, we were, we were talking about going every three years, at least for right now.
And when you do them, Sam, are, are you also kind of just taking a look at, um, air, um, our, well, I call them comparables, our other communities with, with similar recreation activities?
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, we've taken that all into consideration. Um, and these are very fair numbers, still.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Similar to liquor fees, there was a plan to look at updating these fees right around the pandemic and then the pandemic hit. Derailed everything.
Right.
Yeah.
Done for blaming the, the deli.
No, this is the last thing I can blame.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
All right. Any further discussion on that item? Otherwise, Mr. Plasko has made a motion to approve the suggested fee changes as well as to support these two CPA articles. Do I have a second?
I just did have a question on this, the second CPC article. Is that the one for the dugouts?
Yes.
I, I support this. Um, just a question, um, I think this is great. Um, I'm not getting around to the fields much as I guess I should. Are there other fields in Norwood that also could benefit down the line from similar dugout arrangements?
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, there are a few that we do need to address and, and add dugouts to. Um, this was just to start it because currently, um, the Norwood High School softball team does play their games there. Yeah.
So we, we could look forward perhaps in the future for either through the CPC process or other process to perhaps some more dugout work?
Absolutely, yes. Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion on the motion? Motion made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Sad. And with that then, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, unanimous. All right.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you so much for coming in to see us.
Yes, thank you all. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know your Buffalo Bills did do good last weekend. And this weekend.
It is what it is.
Yeah.
Have a great night.
You as well.
Thank you, Sam.
All right. Why don't we go ahead and move to four point two? Um, because while we took care of two of the CPA applications, there's two left. Uh, one is the Veteran's Service Office and the other is from the Norwood Historical Commission. And so the Veteran's Service Office application, uh, they've gone out and gotten some information and have included it with the application. Uh, take questions, comments, motions?
Um, sure. I, it, it, it looks, um, like a really good request for CPA. Um, the only question I had, and I noted it here, um, the write-up, we're talking about, um, an updated compilation of names will be considered when determining the manner of display. Um, are we, I don't know if we answered this. I, I, I noticed in Memorial Hall that, um, we have the fallen heroes, um, recognition. Um, and then we have the plaques dedicated to all, uh, Norwood residents who served in the armed forces during a number of the conflicts and wars on the wall. Um, I don't think we have, uh, a specific, um, dedication to those who served in conflicts beyond, um, uh, the World War and Korean War, Vietnam War. So Gulf War, Afghanistan, Iraq. So is the idea of the compilation of names be considered So is the idea of the compilation of names be considered when determining, are, are, are we looking at perhaps adding through this process, a dedication to those, uh, Norwood residents who served in those conflicts?
Uh, there is some recognition there already. There's been some changes and time has gone on, so it's looking to update, um, what's there. And you'll notice if you look at some of the plaques, certain names that have been found over time.
Yeah.
Sometimes going back 60, 70 years, and then that's why we have the little extra stickers. So this would, um, give us a chance to update it, sort of refresh everything and get it all in the same sort of format so it looks, um, more presentable.
Okay, thank you.
All right, further question?
I'd make a motion. Okay, if.
Did, did you have? Okay.
I'll make a motion, that we support this particular CPA request?
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Lane. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, unanimous. All right, and then we move to the second one. Um, this is another CPA application regarding the lockup.
Motion to deny. We've already handled this one a couple of times in the past. Uh, I know the sponsor, Howard, uh, had sent an email looking for us to forward this prior to this meeting. And there's some mention about, you know, some friend gave him this amount of money. There's no real direction as to what we're talking about doing with this, or where we want to go with this, what the money, uh, you know, is for, if it's enough money. Uh, uh, you know, we, we didn't see a need to do anything with the property in the past, and they haven't supplied any better, clearer direction as to what is on their minds. So until they do, I don't think we should be supporting it.
Motion to deny made by Mr. Plasko.
I'll second the motion by Mr. Plasko.
Seconded by Mr. Donnelly. Uh, the only thing I'd add to the discussion is I'm kind of in the same place with it, which is a, I have never heard anyone, not this board or even other groups, discuss any sort of intent to get rid of the lockup. We all agree that we like it, want it, and are actively using it, even though that usage may be storage. We're not trying to let that building go to shambles because we're storing things in it, and if we don't protect the building, then it won't be very useful for storage if it's letting the elements in. Uh, so I just want to make sure it's very clear to people that we, we don't want that building to decay, and it's not our intent to let it decay. Um, and then if they do have an intent to, you know, turn it into something other than storage, I need a lot more detail about what that intent is. You know, why was 50K selected? Like, what is that going to be utilized for? Most of the CPA applications that I see are a lot more detailed. Uh, and so I'd really need a lot more information before I could support something like that. But again, from an intent standpoint, we will continue to maintain the lockup, to continue to utilize it as storage. We're not going to let it just fall apart.
Um, I would agree. I think that, you know, we see from the, um, prior applications we view today is that they're very specific. We, you know, in terms of what the intended, um, the intent of the, of the, of the money was to do. And each of those three applications already are, are looking at specific assets that we have that we already know what they're doing, we know what they are. Here, I'm a little vague also as to, um, you know, what 50,000 would go to spend on. And I think it's kind of hard to kind of define, to tell, to say, we're going to spend $50,000 for a purpose to rehab, not knowing what the purpose of that rehab is. Um, so I think before we would entertain any kind of discussion about, um, work to be done on, on, on the lockup, I think we, we need to have a discussion around, well, what do we want it to be used for if we want it to be used for something beyond what its current use is today? So, um, without that kind of detailed information, I, I don't think it's a good idea to, to put forward $50,000 of CPA money to, um, for this purpose identified, purpose identified in the application.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Manager. Ju- just to reiterate what you'd said for, you know, the boards where we do use the building. We store a lot of the outside equipment for Town Hall there, we store records there. Doesn't mean we couldn't store those elsewhere, but the building gets used, the front part of the building has a little bit of office space that has been shut down for years. The building doesn't have water and, um, electricity, it's cold storage, which we use for cold storage. Never been any discussions that it would be anything else than that, or that we're not going to want to use that, or to tear it down or anything. So there is this regular effort where, you know, well-intentioned folks say, well, let's, let's get some money or find a grant for the old jail. And to your point, it's to, to one end. The typical life cycle of a project, if somebody wanted to do something there, is first you would need to look at the conditions of the building if you're going to do anything. It is an old building. Um, it doesn't have water and power to most of it, so you do an existing conditions report. That's the first thing you do. You find out what condition it's in, what kind of work would it need. You follow that up with feasibility, because we can talk about, we'd like to do something else there, but what does that actually mean? And that feasibility study looks at, well, what if you wanted to turn it into a, a little museum? What, what would that require? What if you wanted to turn it into office space, and what would that require? What if you just wanted to fix it up and make it, uh, not cold storage? What would that require? And then from there, you have a project. And then the third step is, this is the project to turn into X, Y, or Z. So if somebody wanted to see a project happen there, that's generally how it should be approached if somebody was interested.
Being fair, I believe that previously we had seen a feasibility request, if I remember right. But we, at the time, didn't support it.
Because, eh, again, feasibility is not the first step. It's really looking at the condition of the building, and, and that'll tell you what needs to be done. In any case, feasibility is the practicality of it. Um, so it's still, it's not that we're being, I don't think the board is being up to, so we're not saying, no, no, you didn't pick the right step. It's just, this is not how you can do a project if you were to want to do something there.
Oh, man.
Thank you.
Just into that point, Mr. Donnelly. Um, also, if we're going to talk more about renovation of Town Hall, I feel like we can bake that into whatever the plan is, right?
If it in fact needs work, I mean, as cold storage, it's, it's fine.
Right, maybe that's just all it is.
Yeah, and, and a building staying as cold storage doesn't need a whole lot of work. If we found that the little roof was leaking, we would come forward with a capital request to replace the roof as needed. It, it seems to be working, as of today, it works absolutely fine in its condition for us as cold storage. If anyone wants to do anything different, that's a different story, but it's, it's functioning fine.
And because we're using it as active storage, where we're actually going in and taking things in and out of it, we have pretty good visibility on the inside of it. Like, if the roof was trying to leak, we would notice that.
Correct. It's all, it's a small building. It's right there, we see it every day. It's not a.
Could be your new office.
It, it could be. We, you know, seven, seven, $10 million CPA renovation project, it certainly could be.
Just a point of information, so the applicant refers to the lockup as, um, cultural resource significance as it's located right next to Town Hall, which is on the National Register of Historic Places. Now, the slide's telling us that the lockup is on the National Register. I don't believe that's true, is it?
The, the whole parcel is, I believe it's included as part of the parcel. You'd really have to dig into the application to determine whether the outbuilding is really critical to it. So it, it likely is, but that, that means nothing. I mean, our bathrooms are on the National Trust, if you want to, if you want to look at it that way. It's a storage building, it's, it's part of this whole complex, if you will, is.
I understand. Um, and I get that, thank you. It's, there is a big difference between the Town Hall as a building structure and its connection to the history of Norwood, um, much different, and I would say more significant than, than the lockup would be, just from a historical perspective. But thank you, thank you.
Mr. Sad.
Manager, Tony, um, what, what's the history of the first jail in Noah, in New England? What is the history for the people in TV Lynn?
Yeah, our first lockup was right there next to Town Hall.
Okay, but it's just for Noah, it's oldest lockup barracks?
Correct.
Not anything in New England or the Massachusetts?
It, it's possible, but I don't know that that would change the, the designation. I would, uh, have to ask Dr. Fanning that question to get my history right, but.
All right, yeah, just what the history of it, of the historical.
I believe it was our first public building that we built in town.
I think it is the first.
But again, nobody's denying that, and we're not proposing to tear it down.
Yeah, we don't want to get rid of it.
It's just, it's been cold storage for quite a while. There was an HR office over there many years ago.
Gives the town a bad rap to say our first building was a lockup. Let's move on.
We just believe in safety, that's all.
All right, so, uh, motion to deny made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Donnelly. All in favor of denial, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, unanimous. All right, so that should take care of all the CPA applications, so we can drop down to item 4.3, which is liquor license fees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are proposing that the board increases liquor fees. We have not done this since 2019. Uh, it was a small increase in 2019 with plans to start looking at it. The pandemic, we actually, the board lowered the fees, reduced them at half for the first two years of the pandemic. And then the third year, it might've gone back up to full, or there might've been a, um, a stutter step back to where we are. You'll notice some of the fee amounts are relatively odd numbers, and that was because that 2019 increase was relatively slow, meant to be a multi-year increase. One of the challenges when we look at fees and say, well, let's make sure we go up a little bit each year, which is the best case scenario, when you have an off, uh, an odd charge, like a $1,300 charge, it becomes 1326 when you say, let's go up a half a point or something. So sometimes it is better to wait a few years and then go up a reasonable amount, depending on what the actual fee is. If you think of a $10 charge going up 5% a year, it's easier to just wait a few years and then go up. That being said, since they've not gone up since 2019, consistent with our goal of making sure we are aggressively looking at fees, what doesn't get paid in the fee gets paid in property taxes, we are proposing the following increases to liquor license fees. This would take effect for, uh, the next licensing year, should the board approve it tonight. Uh, that would be for licenses that start January 1st.
All right, questions or comments?
So we, um, thank you, Madam Chair. So we cut the fees during the pandemic. We brought some of them back a couple of years after the pandemic?
Yeah, the first two years, we, we charged half price, basically, is what it was.
Okay.
I wouldn't say we, we cut the fee, we basically said, the board voted to have them pay half. We didn't adjust it down and then.
When we adjusted.
We charged us, we didn't change the.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
So at some point, so in, um, the memorandum is telling us that, um, prior to the pandemic, we set fees in 2015. So when we reset the fees after the pandemic, were, was, were we reverting back to the 2015 level, or?
No, the 2019 was the latest adjustment. 2015 was a larger adjustment, nothing until 2019. That was supposed to be the start of five years of small adjustments each year.
Okay.
Um, we did one of them in 2019, and then the pandemic hit. To Mr. Plasko's point, we didn't then say, we're now voting that the, the all alcohol fee is $1,100 instead of $2,200. It was just pay half the fee.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Plasko.
Yeah, I support these fees. We have ongoing cost increases, so we have to cover those. Um, it's part of our town financial policies that all fees will be reviewed and kept current. And I worked at a couple of towns, and every town actually has slightly different, um, licenses that they have. But in a couple of towns that I looked at, these are right in line with them, so it's not like we're being, uh, out of line and all, in my opinion, so I, I, I would approve these.
I agree with Mr. Plasko.
I agree with Mr. Lane.
All right, so, Mr. Plasko has moved to approve the licensing fee changes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Lane. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, unanimous. All right, item 4.4, this is the depot lease renewal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the board entered into a five-year lease with an option to renew for five years, um, for the Norwood, the portion of the Norwood Depot parking lot that we own. The lease is with the, uh, the MBTA. They own the rest of the, uh, lot. This is a longstanding lease arrangement. We're just checking with the board to see if you want to continue, uh, for the next five years. The annual rent is about $25,000 a year. There is a cost escalator built in every year. We receive the rent right at the start of the year on this particular.
Two percent?
Yeah, two or two and a half.
I recommend that we do it, uh, continue it. We don't have any immediate identified need for it. The old contracts lease that we had, uh, would require that if we broke the lease, um, we had to pay for redoing the park lots and the entrances and so forth, which would probably be close to a year's income anyhow. With the new lease, we were able to negotiate that whoever breaks the lease has to assume that cost. So, uh, let them break the lease, not us, unless we had a real urgent need for it.
Yeah, this is one where we're sort of, I, I would never say we're stuck, but they sort of need it, we have no other use for it, but we will want to get rid of it.
Actually, when we went to tell me to buy this, it was Chloe identified us, that's why we will buy it.
Madam Chair, um, MBTA handles all the maintenance, paving, all that stuff.
Yeah, we have nothing to do with any of that. Nope.
Yeah, plowing, none of that.
Further questions? Otherwise, then, entertain a motion.
I'll motion to approve the, the renewal of the lease.
Motion made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Lane. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, unanimous. Uh, all right, this brings us to item 4.5, scrutinized carefully. Uh, this is our proposal for when we will meet for the rest of the fall and winter for the new year.
Correct, thank you, Madam Chair. As we've worked on, we're, this is the tentative November and December meeting schedule, obviously subject to change based on the needs of the town, but we'd be looking at, uh, possibly doing a short meeting prior to town meeting on the 13th. If there are any, uh, applications or other items the board has to approve, uh, regular meeting on November 18th. December 2nd and 16th would be our December meetings, uh, with the tax rate hearing, uh, being on December 2nd, which is the date that the assessors requested to be prepared by. And we would do like our license approvals on December 2nd as well, once we have, uh, gives us the time to make sure we have everything in.
And then we're going to try to shift the start time of that one on the 16th?
A little bit earlier. Historically, we've done that for the last meeting of the year. But as the board knows, there may be executive sessions between now and then off schedule. If we need a meeting, the board can call a meeting.
And then obviously, if we need to do November 4th, we could, uh, but not planning to right now.
Correct.
Especially since we're planning to do the 28th. So if, if anybody has any major conflicts with that that would threaten a quorum, just please let us know.
Do we need a motion?
Uh, do we need a motion?
No, it's always something to change. It's more just making sure everyone's on the same page, that this is the plan, and of course, the best of plans come, uh, you know, get messed up, but.
All right, so then it sounds like we're good. Information heard and noted. All right. So now we come to item 4.6, uh, which is we have the BACH fund distribution. So we have paperwork in front of you that shows you how it laid out for the year. Uh, and then as usual, uh, as far as I'm aware, we usually make the list available on the website for folks to be able to see.
Correct.
Uh, has that already been posted up to the website yet? Okay, so, very shortly.
It's not necessary, does the board want to take a perfunctory vote on the BACH fund grants?
I think it's in our usual practice that we do vote to just, um, grant them.
Prove the chess list of distribution.
I'll second Mr. Plasko's motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Donnelly. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for taking your task.
I think my favorite part of that task is, uh, then you get to know all the different activities and things that people are interested in, and even if I couldn't select them, I can still go find them later.
I was particularly happy to see the Kevin Broderick show on there.
Yeah, exactly. I love seeing the engagement, it's great. Um, all right, so now let's get down to 4.7, which is the special town meeting warrant. Um, do we want to take that as separate than the yellow sheet, or sort of combine the conversation, and then we can take individual motions as necessary?
I think it's sort of.
Separate because the, allowing the warrant to be the articles that have been submitted is one thing. The yellow sheet has taken out positions on those, on those matters.
Yeah, that's true. So do we, well, do we want to go through all the articles and then come back and the And the board can decide include or not include, vote or not include? Do we want to?
Unless, unless, we'll try the consent way. Unless, unless somebody has read one of these articles that they have questions on, make a motion that we insert them all in the warrant.
Okay, so I'll, I'll first go through the warrant. And stop me if you have any questions, but this first.
We don't want to go through it. We've seen it, we've read it, we know what's on there.
Oh, okay.
If we have a question, I can make consent.
Yeah, pull it up.
Or stop and talk about that one or two. Otherwise, approve them all to be inserted in the warrant. Then we'll go to the yellow sheet and talk about them.
Yeah, so this first one, the more narrow version, we don't need to actually read the whole thing.
Okay, so you want me to just? Read the article and the name and then just stop me if you want, okay.
Yep.
Article one is an appropriation for the workers' comp insurance fund. Article two is an appropriation into the OPEB trust fund.
I did have a question, I'd like to bring forward on that.
Okay, hold that one.
Okay. Article three is appropriation from water sewer to correct a deficit associated with the capital project fund. Article four is a sewer inflow and infiltration study. We have to reverse a borrowing, sorry, we have to reverse a cash payment we made and turn it into a borrowing. I can explain that one, or I can go to the next one?
Go to the next one.
Article five is an appropriation for the special education reserve fund. Article six is an appropriation for the capital stabilization fund. Article seven is the acquisition of 820 Napont Street, known as the Nikowski Farm. Article eight is the acquisition of 814 and 816 Napont Street, which are parcels adjacent to Nikowski Farm. Article nine is the capital improvement plan. We do have a change to one item of the capital improvement plan, but otherwise, it's the entire capital improvement plan. That is the warrant, as they say.
Do we want to swing back on that item two for your question?
Yeah, I'm, it's just, I'm posing the question, I support the article. I know it's consistent with our policy, which does say when we have an overage in our health insurance budget line, the excess goes into OPEB fund. And our OPEB fund certainly needs more aggressive funding over time. The only question I have, and I think this is more of a question for us going forward. If we do not fund this, the cash then goes into free, the overage goes into free cash.
Correct.
I understand that you've described. And I'm just asking the question as to given our, and we do see, we do anticipate that FY '27, we're still going to see significant increases in our health insurance. I'm just wondering whether or not it's an opportunity to revisit that particular strategy and maybe have a discussion around, given the escalating costs of our health insurance, is it, is it feasible for us to consider having it roll into free cash and make it available to help supplement the cost increases that we're expecting in FY '27?
I would agree, I think it's, we, so we were doing this and it was part of, you know, we tell the bonding agencies we're doing this, this is how we're approaching OPEB. We then put it in the operating budget, so we wouldn't have to bring it to town meeting. And then DOR said, no, you should separately still do it as an article at town meeting. So fine, we only fight with DOR on occasion. As to the larger policy question, one could argue, should it go to the pension? Right, we've got to solve the pension funding before we can ever solve OPEB. So if one of those can possibly be done in 15 years and the other one can be done at 35, to your point, are we throwing, you know, pennies towards a million dollar cost that's not necessarily going to get us there? If this is an average amount, let's say $750,000 is what's left in the health insurance budget every year, and it's a $22 million budget. So to be clear, that is not a large, that is not a big, big amount of money left over. Over the next 10 years, would I rather see that go into the pension fund versus OPEB? I think the answer is yes. But then if we're asked how we're funding OPEB, the answer after you, well, we're waiting until we get our pension fund overfunded, or up to 100, 110%.
So do we want to pull this article? Or do we want to deal with it separately at budget time?
I think we want to, I just, food for thought, I think that, I support this. I would support it, I would recommend it is consistent with our policy. But I just think it might be food for thought for going, looking at the future, whether or not this particular policy advances our financial mission as effectively as other options. So it's just a matter of something for us to consider perhaps in the future when we are looking at our financial strategies over the long term.
You think it comes a point to your prioritizing what funds we want to fill and what order?
Agreed, but for now, the article would stay in. So make a motion to approve the warrant as draft has suggested, warrant articles.
Motion made by.
Close the warrant.
Motion made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Donnelly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, unanimous.
How you can do yellow sheet?
Now we can get into yellow sheet.
Well, do you want me to go into a further description or same thing? Just call out the article and then hold it? Do you want me to explain every article, what would the board like?
How are we feeling about the yellow sheet in terms of our appetite for?
And just to be.
Doing them one by one?
If I could, what we'd like tonight, if you're able to, is just your vote of support or non-support or whatever the vote is on each of the items. If there's some final technical changes to grammar or language or wording, let us know, we have a day or two to finish those. I can run through, you can yell hold if you want to have a debate on it.
Let's try the hold, because I feel like there's no sense in having your grue into all the detail in that way. If we're like, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I know you like to be here as long as possible.
Oh, but I get to talk about workers' comp trust funds and municipal finance, okay. Article one, workers' comp insurance fund. We can always come back to it, of course.
Yep, we can.
Article two, OPEB trust fund. Article three, water sewer enterprise fund to close a $4,000 deficit. MWA sewer inflow infiltration study swapping borrowing for cash for borrowing, because they've asked us to. Article five, appropriation for special education reserve fund.
Hold.
Hold article five. Article six, appropriation for capital stabilization fund.
Hold.
Article seven, acquisition of 820 Napont Street, Nikowski Farm property. Article eight, acquisition of 814 and 816 Napont Street, parcels adjacent to Nikowski Farm parcel.
Only one small thing, typos, we can just send you those separately.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm not asking it to hold. I did have a couple of questions that we can address at another point in time.
So we.
Technical questions.
Article nine, the capital improvement plan, we do have one change that I can outline to the board if you'd like me to know.
Yeah, hold.
Yeah, so we'll hold that one and look at that.
All right. So I believe we'll be starting with article five for board debate discussion and ultimately to take a vote that will not reflect 5-0.
All right.
Do you want to take a vote to approve everything else unanimously or?
Yeah, let's go ahead and everything else we can note as being unanimous, whereas these five, six, and nine, we'll have some discussion to see whether it's going to be the case. So do I have a motion for the other items that were not held for approval, or I should say of support by the board?
Right, because we already proved them being inserted now would be our position.
Yeah, our position of support. Motion by?
So the chair is asking for a motion?
You got it.
Yeah.
Motion made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Donnelly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, all right, unanimous on those. So now we get into item number five. Article five for the special education reserve fund. Do you like background or would you like to go straight into discussion?
Oh, please.
I have a background.
Yeah, I can give just a brief background. The school, the school committee has requested that town meeting appropriate free cash to the special education reserve fund to the maximum allowed under state law, which is about 2% of total net school spending for the purpose of funding any unanticipated and unbudgeted special education costs that might come up from year to year, including possible recommendations as a result of the student services program review that was presented to the school committee in 2025. This would add approximately $580,000 to that reserve fund. If you remember, last year, there was a delta between what the school department wanted and ultimately what the board wanted to put into that fund.
All right, so we'll open it to discussion, start with Mr. Plasko.
Yeah, I would oppose this. We opposed it last time, it was at town meeting. And basically, it's an account that is there and it's not being used. We still went along with the idea of giving it a boost from what it was, up to the million dollar number. There still hasn't been a need to use it. And I just don't see plenty of the way in this reserve with the financial position the town's in. We haven't had a full financial discussion yet. And we may be able to use this money somewhere else more effectively or more urgently than it is now. And until we make that analysis and that determination, I think we should kind of hold on to that money and not put it into this account.
And then for context.
At this time.
For context, I believe the amount that is there, they're asking for 100%. Where we're at, if we don't do that, is 66%?
About that, yeah.
A million dollars instead of a million five.
Right. So, you know, in case that is any concern to anybody, you know, is 66%.
It is when they haven't used it all these years. I think they withdrew from it once or twice, small amounts. And that's been years since that's happened.
Do we have any additional context on the item they cite from the June presentation to them? Was it that they were like, there is a specific thing that's coming our way and it's not here yet?
I have a technical concern with that. The idea of a special ed stabilization fund is that you have money aside for unforeseen special ed expenses, which happen. The process is the request has to come to this board, which is also allowed to approve it. That way it doesn't go back to town meeting. I had heard this language before. I don't know that we can say something recommended as a result of a study is an unforeseen expense that we can take out of an account for unforeseen expenses. I just.
Is that selective?
I think the intent is very clear that when you have an unforeseen expense, a report that says you should add X, Y, or Z, or buy Y software, I don't think that's really meeting the test of is it an unforeseen expense? Unforeseen expenses, something is changed and you have to do something as a result of it.
Just like, that's what the reserve, the actual reserve fund the FinCom has is supposed to be for that purpose too.
You just, Mr. Plasko's point, if we got, we wouldn't use our reserve fund necessarily for something we wanted to do, it's supposed to be for unforeseen expenses.
But if we don't put this in as unrecommending, and gee, my God, we made a mistake, there's a need. You still go to FinCom for the reserve fund transfer, still go to town meeting, there's still way to get the funds to them if the need actually arises. And in the meantime, why have the funds tied up until we know what we need to do with them?
All right, so essentially, if we need it, we think we can.
We always will, we will always find a way to get through, you know, if there's a need that arises and it's $200,000 and making that number up, and we just don't have the money anywhere, we can't, we're going to have to figure, we'll find a solution to the problem, absolutely.
Thing is, once we put it in here, it's there, we can't use it for anything else.
Right, right.
But it is, it is providing for them, what I see it as is sort of a potential insurance reserve for them, that this isn't just for one year, this would be a reserve that they could apply in the event that there's overspending in that account. And it is subject to both the approval of the school committee and the board. I would tend to consider their request and I would support it.
Can you elaborate on that a little further?
I believe this is a request, I don't believe it's a reasonable request. I think that sped spending can escalate quite quickly, and it has in the past. I think this would give the opportunity for, hopefully on a longer-term nature, where this nature, where the schools will have the opportunity to spend for those expenditures without having to go through the hoops that we're providing through other mechanisms. So I see it's more like, it's more like ensuring that they can have that available to them in any event that there's unforeseen spending and sped, which I understand that maybe the last year hasn't been a lot, but it has been an item that has skyrocketed year to year over time.
I don't want to go labor too much, but I just point out that this is ongoing reserve. As you say, it doesn't have to be used this year, can be used in the future. But as I said earlier, that ties up this money. The school department, the last time it was used, I think it was like 225, 250,000 and many years ago. So there's no great urgent need. And if an urgent need comes up, there's other ways the town has of financing it, through town meeting, through reserve fund, from the finance committee, et cetera.
Yeah, I know they've gone into their.
But once we tie it up, we've tied it up.
Correct, I know they've gone into the last couple of budget cycles proposing to use some of this. I'm not also sure that, and then that they, the idea was that they would use it last only if they need to. Unless those are truly new special ed expenses, I don't know to what extent that's also what the intent of this particular law is.
Well, just to clarify my own position, I'm not opposed to this being an expense that we have to meet and have to work with them to meet. I just don't think we have to tie up the money to do it. And the town, well, we're trying to look at our full financial picture, which we still haven't done yet. We should keep this reserve available.
Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can understand the arguments for both for and against. I think I would lean more towards Mr. Donnelly's argument. I think the money is there now, it gets us to that place, it sort of settles that. It's, I understand there are probably other mechanisms for tapping into that money should we need to, but I like the idea of kind of getting it done now, especially considering, you know, we know what free cash is for this coming year, but we don't know what it'd be for the future. I also like the idea of just having this out at town meeting. You know, I think the school department would make, be able to make an argument for it. And if people don't think it's a great idea, there, we'll take a vote, right?
Correct, I think the board voted to include in the warrant, so it's just what your, what your opinion on whether.
It's on the warrant.
Right.
The last time we opposed it, it's what, it's going to be this time.
Right, right, no, just reaffirming.
Town meeting is to make the decision, yeah.
Yeah, but, you know, personally, I see the value in funding it now, but there could be arguments made at town meeting to not, so.
Mr. Donnelly?
I'm new on the block, but I understand Matt's side and Bob's side and Bill's side. And I think we have to be a little more budget constrained now with our free cash. The bag only has so much money in it, and we have to spend that wisely in the next two or three years or four. But I think if they need it for education, they come back to us. As Tony says, we'll find a way to fund it, we've never not done it. So I just think it's prudent to be more business savvy with this money that we have, because it's going quickly.
For my part, I am more in the camp of Mr. Plasko of we kind of need the ability to be nimble. Once we sort of force assign everything into the buckets, it takes that card out of your hand, essentially. On the other hand, I can see an argument for saying, well, if you're always going to say yes to it anyway, why not put it aside so that we don't have to go through that step? Can we imagine a scenario where we're like, oh no, they're stuck, because we had to use it for some other even more important reason?
I'm going to be proposing later on that we have some serious budget discussions. And that's, I've been alluding to keeping it there until we have those budget discussions. And if we decide that, gee, that really wasn't needed or anything, we put it in the annual, which is only like six months away.
Okay.
So I don't see the need to be urgent at the special town meeting until we have had time to look at our full financial picture.
All right, any further discussion? Otherwise, we can move into the motion to support and see who does or doesn't. So do I have a motion to support the article five?
I'll make a motion to support article five.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Lane. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. So three opposed, two supporting. All right.
So we'll reflect that in the, just to be clear, we'll reflect that in the yellow sheet that the board voted.
Two to two to oppose.
Three to two to oppose this article.
Right.
All right.
So that ticks our number five, do you want to move to number six?
Article six is an appropriation for the capital stabilization fund. We have not yet received a amount from the FinCom, or at least I have not. You'll remember, we established capital stabilization fund last year. They would like this in the warrant to come with an amount as we get closer to town meeting once free cash is certified, which it has been.
And discussion, Mr. Donnelly?
I don't see how we can make, take a vote to neither support or not, or support the article at this time. I think perhaps we can turn to the FinCom for their specific requests in terms of the amount that they're looking for. And I know that they also have provided us with some information around the parameters of a, of a capital stabilization fund. It might be a time before town meeting where we might be able to have a opportunity to take a position to oppose or support. I don't think that's doable right now.
So table until the meeting prior to the town meeting?
That is my suggestion.
Yeah, if the board would like, what we usually do in that case is we'll, the language on the yellow sheet will say the board will render an opinion or something to that effect on this article prior to town or at, prior to or at town meeting.
All right, so.
Yeah, I would go along with that myself too. I think now is too premature to support it, certainly, well, knowing the amount of money we're talking about. The, there were concerns before about how this account would be used and set up and funded. FinCom has started to talk about that, and they've got a draft, they shared that and asked for some comments. I know a couple of us have made comments to them where we're not comfortable with it and its current form needs more work. So tonight I would be opposed to it, but we'll see if we can get some more, some more discussions and some more concrete answers that change that opinion, but tonight it would have to be a no.
All right, so we've had a motion from Mr. Donnelly to table our opinion about it until the town meeting, the scheduled town meeting, meeting, scheduled town meeting and hour board meeting that day.
Or before if the board.
Yeah, or before if they're suddenly.
Future date to be determined.
Future date to be determined.
I'll make that motion.
You want to table it instead of voting against it?
I would like to table it. At this point in time, the warrant itself doesn't have a specific amount. And they have provided some input to us, and I think, I would defer to the finance commission as to dollar amount and any other specific documentation they want to give us. I know they floated a document by us earlier. I'm not sure that's the final one that's being considered here. So I think we just need more time for them to inform us in terms of what their specific position is.
Yeah, I'm opposed to it. I said earlier, yeah, I would want to work on it. And if something does get approved, want it to be in the best form possible to serve the town well, as well as it can. But in general principle, I'm also opposed to this account and funding this account in the town's current financial position in particular. Again, as we discussed in the last article, this ties up the money once you put it in there, ties it up for a very specific purpose. We already have a stabilization fund that, well, technically, it has met what our current financial policy says. In fact, it slightly exceeded it. We need the full discussion of our financial policies, our financial position to set the town up for the near future. And the current best practices by towns with AAA ratings and by DOR would be that we should have about twice what we have in there. So we don't necessarily want to tie it up into a particular account that, again, ties your hands, it's only for that purpose. Stabilization, the general stabilization fund, if we put the money into that, can be used for these same purposes if there's such a need. But once we do this, it's gone. And I won't get into the rest of it, but I just don't see that they have any displayed enough merit to doing this. We have so many projects identified for the next few years and so much money. for the next few years and so much money necessary to pay for those that I can't see put it in, into an account to take it out the next year to pay for those things. It just doesn't, doesn't make any logical sense to me.
Let me see if we have from Mr. Lane or Mr. Sad any further commentary on that. Because essentially, it sounds like there's, do we want to table it because we're hoping they'll get us more information, that'll get some folks on board? Or do we feel like our temperature is like, look, they're pretty much from a core principle isn't much that would convince us? So I'd be interested in either of you, if you have a way in one way or another.
Well, I'm on the latter. I think to, to put money aside for something that is down the road, I mean, we've got a tough financial situation on the road right ahead of us. And to put it in a capital fund for whatever reason, that doesn't make sense to me.
I'm not particularly opposed to putting aside funds and saving them, but not in this account.
Oh, no, yeah. We've got two accounts. And after, and after we've studied the whole financial-
Yeah, I would agree. I feel, yeah, I feel differently about the special education fund. I feel strongly about that one. But this one, I think we've historically done a good job funding these capital projects. So I would agree with Mr. Plasko. Mr. Chair?
All right. Why don't we try it this way, Mr. Donnelly? If I have you take a motion to table it to a future date, we'll see if we get a second. So a motion being by Mr. Donnelly to table Article Six to a later time. Do I have a second? I'll second.
Okay.
Motion being by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by the chair. All in favor of tabling to later, please say aye.
Aye.
Is that an aye from Mr. Lane? All right. All opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. Mr. Plasko, Mr. Sad. All right. So three to table, two opposed to tabling. So Article Six, we'd like to table our opinion until a later time.
Okay. Everyone's clear, okay with that language? We've used that language in the past.
Both of you voted for tabling?
For tabling.
But the language is-
But the language on the yellow sheet is, we'll render our opinion-
I think it'd be easier if we just say the board will render an opinion at a prior to a meeting.
Well, last one, we showed the vote.
Uh, we did, because I think, I'd look, the board might come back and change the vote. You're preserving your right to change a vote. The last one, it's important for people to know that some of the selectmen didn't support it. This is just to table it, so.
Whatever.
Yeah. So, so the language of, you know, render our opinion, so that, in terms of what you print on the yellow sheet.
Right. We can write, the board voted three to two to wait until town meeting to table it. So just, they're your yellow sheets. I want to make sure-
Well, let's just table, just leave it at that one.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. And then now we are down to Article Nine.
Yes, there's one change to the capital plan I'd like to talk through briefly first. Make sure that everyone's okay with that. And then I know if anyone has any other issues with the capital plan, we can go through it. There was a, a project for a study of the HVAC system at the elementary schools. We'd like to table that until May. We're doing the electrical study now, and we want to bring that back in May with an appropriation to do the work, to add some air cooling to the elementary schools. Originally, this was a vision on truly looking at how we would do that. Realistically, it's going to be window units, and we've got to look at what upgrades, what electrical upgrades we need to do window units. We're not likely to add a new central air systems to seventy-year-old buildings. So this will increase the comfort level of the buildings, get better air quality and air circulation in old buildings, and keep them as modern as we can for the next decade or so. We do know that the units are probably about a hundred thousand dollar cost. There will be electrical upgrades, and then we'll just have to look at that in the context of, okay, are we doing just what's needed for this? Or do we have some old switchgear somewhere that we might need? So the cost may not change dramatically, it may go up between now and then, but we would like to table that whole project until May, just so we can come back with the actual number to get it done and hopefully get most of that work done over the summer.
So the initial project, the 250, was for a study, the HVAC systems at six elementary schools. With this change, we're ultimately coming back in May with an actual plan of action to do something at certain schools relative to heating and cooling?
Correct. With the understanding that realistically, we don't think we're going to be able to install central air systems anywhere. By the time you look at the cost and the number of buildings, we just know we're not going in that direction. So we don't need that extensive of a study. We need to look at the electrical systems in the buildings. Can they handle window units? And then there's some work to make sure the window units can be done in a way that works for everyone. And obviously, purchasing that equipment and installing it, that's where we think we're going to go. So rather than study something we know we're not going to do, let's kick it to the spring. We will, we're doing an electrical study now. The facilities department is doing it within their budget. And then we'll come back with an appropriation to hopefully be able to provide air cooling in all of the elementary classrooms.
So that items out, and the total request dollar wise is-
Will drop by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Drops to one hundred and fifty dollars.
Yes, although we're bringing it back in the fall, but for this purpose, it's yes.
All right. Further discussion or questions on Article Nine?
I have no problem with the items and supporting the items and going forward and addressing our asset needs through the capital plan here. But I do have a philosophical difference with how we're funding them. I think we should take these items, most of these items, I can go over each one if you want, but right now I'll talk in general. Some of these that are indicators as being cash and borrow, not take cash. I did include that two hundred and fifty thousand, so we take that out. Just over two million, I would be recommending, two million, one or so, I'd be recommending that we borrow instead of using cash. We are way below our policy as to what we should be using for capital projects in our operating fund. We're just barely over fifty percent of it. So there's plenty of, way, way there within our policy that I think is a, is a sound policy, but we haven't been really following it. We've been using our free cash instead. And again, we keep hopping on the same point. For now, until we do the full analysis of all our free cash, all our budget needs for the next couple of years, and how we would best use them, we should, we should hold on to these free cash. If we borrow right now, and these numbers aren't exact, but hopefully they're pretty close, we're working at borrowing, or we're, we're working at borrowing eight hundred, eight million. That would have added approximately six hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars to debt service. But we also have three hundred and sixty-five thousand coming off this year. So the increase in debt service is two forty-eight nine. But my recommendations probably have to add another hundred and forty-five, five hundred and fifty thousand. So you're adding about four hundred and twenty, call it, thousand dollars in debt service. But that's still less than the six fourteen that we had this year. It's coming, coming off, or that we were going to add. So I, I think that it's makes more financial sense to be doing this borrowing for these items. Also, if, you know, the argument as well, when we borrow, now the debt service is that much less for general government schools' operating cost. But I'd rather give them the hundred and forty-five thousand they need out of free cash than two million, because it still preserves the two million for our other deeds. So I just think that should be, we need those projects. I don't have any problem with supporting those projects, but I think they should be borrowing, not paid cash.
Mr. Sad?
Are you thinking, Bill, to put them in a, like a safety bond, a floater bond for eight million? Is that what is, is that your intention?
They borrow, yeah.
Yeah, eight million.
Right?
Yeah, so-
We're borrowing eight million now to begin with.
Right. Some of that's water, some of that's general fine.
Yeah, that's, no.
The, one of the challenges, remember, we can only borrow according to terms that the state sets. So you take an ambulance, for instance, we might be able to argue we can borrow over ten years for that.
There's a period of time.
Right, but not everything is thirty years, which drops that cost down. And some of these other items, I mean, the-
That just means we pay it off that much sooner, so we don't have the longer debt service.
Right, but that, that number, yeah, that number goes up. So some of these are five-year items, some of them are ten or fifteen.
Pretty small amount. Pretty small amount. You can borrow the whole thing for a hundred and forty thousand. Take a one piece of it's going to be pretty small. So.
What would the mechanism be to make the changes that you're thinking?
Simply, simply change these to borrow.
Like, just update the yellow sheet?
And then if town, and then if town meeting approves it, just the same as they approve this.
That's not the thing. We don't do that. We just borrow.
Then the treasurer, we borrow the amounts, which is, some of these items I've rounded already. We're just adding a number of items we borrow. Like I say, we have, currently, our general fund is four million, four seventy-three, or two point six five percent of our operating budget, or our policy calls it being five percent. So we've got plenty of room there, plenty of way, way to be following the policy that we've established, townwide financial policy that's already been worked out by bond council and everything in the past. And DOR, again, best practices, we're, we're in line with it. We're not going beyond it.
Mr. Lane?
Thank you. These borrowing amounts and mechanisms, that, they come as recommendations from the capital improvement, the committee, right? You guys talked about it. Not to put you on the spot, Mr. Donnelly, but can you talk about sort of the impetus for making these recommendations as such? Because I imagine this was discussed.
We did discuss. And in addition to the projects being cited by capital outlay through departments and general fund, you know, we do receive from town management, from Jeff, from, from Tony, the financial implications.
I said, I meant outlay. I said improvements.
Yes, that's okay. So, you know, the committee was fine with the source of funding. That's what identified through the plan. They had questions, they were addressed. I just, I'm, I'm not sure I'm fully on board, respectfully, Mr. Plasko, with, with this philosophy. When we have a year like we're having with, you know, upwards of twenty-five million dollars in free cash, I mean, I think there's an opportunity for us to take that advantage of that free cash number and pay for much of this with, with cash as opposed to borrowing. I understand there are some points to be made there for, for discussion, the numbers that you mentioned. But when we do borrow, we are adding to our operations budget, the borrowing costs. So we are incurring an increase in the operating budget, because debt service is paid through our operating budget. And I think in, there, I think there would be a year, perhaps, when we have really tight free cash. And we have priority projects in, perhaps in those years. It, it might make sense to me at least to say, well, we should, we should borrow. We just don't have the free cash resources to, to apply to these projects. But I don't think this is a year that, I don't think we're in that kind of a year. You know, so I, I would support many of these projects being one-time expense, expenses that we can pay for one time with free cash, and not have to incur the ongoing obligation for debt service for whatever length of time the project is, is funded for. But my opinion.
I would just add to that, if I might, or counter that a little bit, that what the capital aid committee looks at is different than our full financial picture.
Sure.
And responsibility for the full financial picture. And I would argue just the opposite with free cash. Where we're at today, we want that free cash to maybe budget, balance the budget for the next couple of years, and to provide and preserve ongoing services. We spend it on capital items and free cash, we spend the free cash on capital items, and we don't have it to preserve operations. So again, we have to be careful what we're doing. The add, the addition to debt service, as I mentioned, is below what we started this year with. The amount coming off this year is still less than what we're going to add back in by a couple hundred thousand dollars. So we're in better position than we were this past year. And it, well, it just doesn't make sense to tie up free cash.
Does that include the, the borrowing that we, we have for Article Eight?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I'm sorry, what's Article Eight?
Um.
Before I say, before I say yes.
The two property, yeah, the, you know.
No, just the capital item. Just the capital.
Mr. Manager, and then I'll come back to Mr. Sad.
Mr. Sad?
Okay.
I, I think, I'm, I, in the business world, I guess we think about, I've got five billion dollars in the bank, and it's earning me four percent, or three eight, four, four point two. And whatever we borrow from the bank with the rates going down, it's a swap. And it's an even swap, kinda. There's no skin off your, off your wallet, because it's, what you're earning is paying the interest, basically what you're doing, but it preserves your capital. And I know what Bill's getting at, is preserving the cap, the cash for the funding of other things and not just spending it all, borrowing it down the road for five or ten or fifteen or twenty year period. I mean, I don't know what the rate is, but if we pulled a ten-year note at eight million, four percent, three and a half on down.
Four point five or so they used in the examples.
Oh, I didn't see the example. Four point what?
Five.
Five?
And the examples they used.
Yeah. I think you can get below that, but that's just a thought.
Well, the more you borrow, the more you might. But that's what they use for their examples here.
But I know what you're getting at. It just makes sense to preserve your capital at this point because we're, sure we need it.
Sure. What, one, you know, we could do if the board would want, if you approve the projects, we can put something in the yellow sheet that the board voted to approve these projects, reserves the right to have a different funding approach. We can run the debt service analysis, get the exact costs to everyone. The only concern I have is just checking the timeline on some of these projects, because DOR limits how long we can borrow for. And to Mr. Plasko's point, it just means you pay it back sooner. I just would like to check them. But we can fairly quickly get you an analysis where, okay, if you take these identified projects, if you borrow, this is the dollar amount, this is what it would be, and this would be the addition to debt service, if you did it based on what the borrowing timelines that we're allowed to do. That way, your, the capital plan moves forward, but it shouldn't take us, it won't take us that long to do it. You could have it at your October twenty-eighth meeting. There's still time to talk to other boards and say, we'd rather go in this direction.
I like that proposal.
When do you need to send out the yellow sheets for town meeting members?
Realistically, Friday. But if there's otherwise-
Well, you can just say we approve the, you know, I think-
Projects are approved, we will have been on, opine on the funding source.
The board may bring a, a alternative funding plan for these projects to town meeting. And I think, not to confuse town meeting, but we would have that ahead of time. But people would have a very clear sort of, it's this or this, and there'll either be consensus or there won't.
Info session timings?
Uh, I think first week of November. I could be wrong.
Okay, so we would meet before that?
Yeah. It won't take us more than two days to just plug the numbers in and get the board an idea of what, what the delta-
And would you, in that analysis, would you identify the specific project that moves from free cash to borrowing?
Yes, so I think we-
We need, we need to-
I'm always adjusting for my-
Okay, so you have the four in mind. That's my question.
But if you want, if you want to get those projects, what we'll do is we'll say, here, instead of paying cash for these, if you were to borrow, here's the term, here's the estimate of cost, here's what the debt service impact is. We can get that to you, and then everyone can look at sort of a completed project.
Yeah. So it's the larger dollar amounts with the longer potential lifespans of the, of the purchases?
Well, is, would it make sense for us, maybe I'm complicated things, to say, we approve the, we, we approve the projects and the funding source for all but the four, with the four approved as projects, but source of funding, is that too confusing?
I think that's too confusing. I think the plan has been approved, the board may bring an alternate funding. Because if you think about how the mechanism of that's going to work, it would be much easier to go to town meeting and say, we're simply changing the motion for what we want to borrow and pay cash for.
Right.
Boards approve and support these projects.
Like, yes, we want to do it, and then we want to do it these ways.
Still working on recommendation for actual funding.
Yeah, may bring forward a change, a different funding source, but supports all the projects going forward either way. That way, everyone's clear, okay, the board is supportive of this.
So then you would just take out this column?
Oh, there might be one way to do it. Although, will that make it worse, though?
If we can identify those projects, we'll, we'll make it clear that there's four projects that-
Can you asterix the four projects?
I think so.
Or, yeah, you can asterix them, or you can just report them as cash or borrowing. I mean, there are ways to do it.
Yeah, and towns do this. There are times where, you know, you're looking at a budget or a project, and it's capital outlay recommendation, board selectment recommendation, FinCom recommendation. We get it all out there at a town meeting, and they can choose. Operationally, it's not too difficult to do this on the floor at town meeting. If it's by them, and everyone says, yes, we want to do this, it is just a change to the motion.
Okay. All right. Well, then it sounds like we all somewhat have a consensus around that approach. So do I, can I have someone make a motion?
I'll make a motion that the board support the projects with the stipulation that the funding sources for the projects are pending.
It's still under consideration.
Yeah.
A second.
Motion made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Lane. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And that includes the elimination of the HVAC work at elementary school project.
Yes. All right. So that takes us to- That takes us to item 4.9, which is the traffic safety advisory committee recommendations. They had three recommendations, and so if anybody pleasure the board on their recommendations.
Question, are these recommendations for our vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, because I thought the way I read it, it sounded like they made the decisions. They made the decision to support these and recommend them to us.
Correct.
Which I was just going to point out, this is our decision, not theirs. So moved.
Snack off second.
Motion made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Sad. All in favor, please say aye. All aye. All opposed, unanimous. All right, so we already took care of our consent agenda, and Miranda, I believe that takes us down to managers' updates.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just a couple of items. One, the State Department of Public Health, as well as Norwood and Walpole, are issuing just a health advisory regarding a harmful algae bloom at Willet Pond, so they're asking the people, do not swim, jet ski, boat, swallow water, consume fish, perhaps more importantly, keep your animals away. If you do normally walk your animals around Willet Pond, just while there's appears to be an algae bloom, don't let them consume in the water, and don't let them go run and swim in the water. We're going to get this out, the state's put it out there, and we'll get it out on social media, and it's, so Norwood and Walpole working together to just get it out there. If you walk or are otherwise near Willet Pond, please don't drink or swim in the water, and no boating, although we don't tend to have a lot of that on the Norwood side.
Let your dogs know, yeah.
Yeah, and most importantly, don't let your pets in there. That's really what prompted us to want to make sure everyone knows, if you walk your dog around Willet Pond, please don't let them swim in the water or drink the water, we don't want them to get sick, if there's a chance that they could.
Excellent.
Just a brief hospital update, I know it's been somewhat quiet as we've entered the summer into the fall, and that's actually a good sign, even though that sometimes doesn't look like a good sign. The garage construction is ongoing, and they expect the garage to be constructed by the end of January. There have been, I'm a lot more positive now than I was six months ago about the future of the project, and I know that sounds mysterious, but there are just a lot more positive conversations now that the state has moved past the St. Eas taking, and it seems like there's a plan there for Kearney, Nishova Valley has found a solution, so now there's a lot of focus on Norwood and where it's going. I did want to mention, I had a meeting with the Secretary of Health and Human Services a few weeks ago, they continue to express their support for our finding a way through this, and in particular, they mentioned the physical letters that Pat Schick managed to arrange several hundred of those. So when you don't think that there's a value to sending in letters, I sat in Ashburn Place with the Secretary of Health and Human Services and asked me, who is this woman who got all these handwritten, written letters? They never get handwritten letters anymore, or physical letters. So between the website and that, please continue to send in the letters, but the, the garage construction is a good sign, and it seems like there's a lot more focus on Norwood now that some of the other more media crises have subsided.
And as a reminder, folks are wanting to send in letters to continue to let them know the impacts, the website is the fastest, bestest, easiest way to do it.
It goes directly to staff at the, the HHS, so even if you've sent one in, go and send another one in.
Do it some more, yep, can't do enough.
Absolutely, and as I said, it goes directly to actual people, so we got to meet one of the legislative directors who it goes to, who talks about, they come into his email box directly, which I don't know that they love, but it's important to continue to do that, they need to continue here, now that there's also sort of renewed focus on Norwood and that some of these other projects have found solutions.
And then the website address is finishthejobnorwood.com.
Correct, finishthejobnorwood.com. If you want to pull the governor's address and just send a letter to the governor directly or the secretary directly, Pat Schick is somebody to contact, she has those informations, but don't underestimate the value of putting a letter in an envelope and mailing it, particularly in this day and age when that doesn't happen that often.
Absolutely.
It's yielded good results so far.
Great, all right, thank you for the updates. We will move to the selectmen's addenda, if no one has questions for the manager.
Nope.
All right, I'll start with Mr. Lane, who I feel I've been neglecting all night.
Oh, it's okay, thank you, Madam Chair, just want to say, this weekend and next weekend, Saturday, October 18th, and next Saturday, the 25th, as well as Sunday, the 19th, and Sunday, the 26th, Fantasy Footsteps, presented by the Backstage Boosters. My kids have performed in this for a few years, so it's 6:00 to 7:15 at Norwood High School. It's a big fundraiser for, for all the drama club stuff, and it's $10 per person, family cap of $50. It's a nice event, and so if, if any of you all can make it, I would encourage you to go. That's it.
Awesome. All right, we'll move over to Mr. Plasko.
Nothing additional this evening.
Very well, Mr. Donnelly.
I always have the list, I'm so sorry, Madam Chair. Just, just as a reminder, the HR director, Lisa, you did send out the FY25 annual review for the general manager, and just a reminder, do your completion of the information and get it back to her by, I think, October the 20th. We talked recently about a process, and I think Tony outlined a pretty good one, FY26 goals and objectives. Just wanted to see if we have opportunity to perhaps get, I'm sorry, FY, yes, FY26 goals and objectives. I'm just wondering if there's a desire of the board to perhaps have the task that Mr. Mizuko outlined last time, that is, ranking and getting our input on some of the, some of the priority goals that he has on his list, and do we want to do that in time to make a decision and finalize those goals and objectives in October, or the meeting in, well, the meeting in November actually is, let's shoot for the October 28th. Do we have time to do that for the 28th? I guess, Mr. Manager, maybe you can chime in on that.
I, I think so. What might be actually helpful, I mean, if the board, if you just came up with four or five goals you'd like to achieve, I'll sort of merge them all into one list, and then we can start that ranking process. As I mentioned years ago, I made the mistake of asking for an opinion on every item on a list, and it didn't work out, so I think it would be if there's 20 items, it's pick your top four.
Right.
That way, we'll see where we, where we are, and that might help us build some consensus. I think we can do that fairly quickly, and the idea being if, you know, one board member puts, I think I made the joke of one board member puts, look at a dog park, and nobody else even ranks it at all, it's probably not going to be a goal for that year. But we, as a trial process, feel free to just throw out four or five different goals, whatever you want to say, maybe five a person, and then we'll look at the whole list, plus what I'd like to get done in the year, and then just rank them, just your top five, I should say.
I think there's, I think it's a good approach, I think there's also the FY25 goals and objectives that we are now reviewing, has some information in there that I think may inform us in terms of things from that list that we may want to...
That we queued up to.
My, I guess my advice to board members would be, let's try to be a little more big picture than a dog park.
Just an example, it's important to some people.
Yeah.
And I feel like some of the items we had were definitely structured as, this is a, a multi-year goal, it's going to take us this much time to chip away at it. How successful were we at doing the first chipping? Are we ready for the next ones?
Yeah.
So, is this still even a priority?
Good. So, we got our direction, we can, we can put some thoughts together and hopefully be able to consolidate around those objectives for FY26.
Independently in getting them through the general manager.
Yes, yes. You, I think all the members have been receiving emails, the comprehensive plan committee is running some technical work sessions over the next couple of weeks. I know I'm facilitating one next week. Over the next several weeks, we'll be having technical working sessions. I encourage you to attend those you can and offer your input, and that will be very beneficial for the committee to, to kind of nail down sort of the priority strategies associated with the draft plan goals that they've developed so far. And just FYI, and I was watching 60 Minutes on Sunday, I don't know if anybody else caught the story of Littleton, Mass. They were hacked, likely by Chinese hackers, the utility systems were hacked, and they had to spend about $50,000 re-engineering the system. It's becoming a sort of a prevalent tack, tactic among international hackers to get into invisible systems, and just wondering if somewhere down the line, we may want to just, Tony, your staff and IT staff, you know, give us an update in terms of just the kinds of things we're doing to make sure that, you know, we're, we're looking at our...
That could be something we don't want to talk about.
It could be, it could be.
Tell me outside what we're doing.
What if the chairs are watching? We can, we can certainly find a way to review appropriately the board, what we do in a way that doesn't compromise any of the information that we have.
This has been going on for a number of years, I know that failed about two years ago, kind of had it.
Yeah, I know, our, some of our staff from the engineering department, from the electrical engineers, did attend a training session in the last year on that specific incident that the folks in Littleton gave, and talked about what happened, and how they reacted to it, and the assistance they got.
I think that's the kind of briefing that would be helpful. Just beyond that, you know, IT is a pretty important area of the, of general and school. I'm just thinking that we have nice presentations from, from the chiefs, from rec, from Mr. Ryan, just wondering if the board has an interest in perhaps having a similar one on an occasional basis with, with the IT folks.
Yeah, I, I definitely am also interested in that, but agree with the managers, we'll have to do it carefully, so we don't leave ourselves exposed by accident in the process. And there's mechanisms for us to do that through, but I definitely have an interest, but also at a reasonable pace. I don't think this needs to be a, they got to come see us every month, or anything like that.
Might be like an annual thing.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, perfectly reasonable to do as an annual.
And with that, I can now be quiet and turn to Mr. Sad.
Mr. Donnelly had a big list there, I only have a short list tonight. I was watching NCM the other night, and congratulations to the golf team, Tri-Valley leagues, NCM, great job with that. Mr. Manager, putt hole in front of the junior high, I hit it tonight, it's a deep one.
I left it there for you.
If you could look it up, that'd be great.
Now that you've hit it, we'll get it fixed.
Thanks, and maybe, Madam Chair, you might want to send a note to the Bock Foundation, the family to thank them for their generous donation, and there's more to come. And that's that for me.
Will you already do that?
Yeah.
When they made the donation.
Done. Want to keep Ernie and my clemmy happy.
Absolutely, we're very appreciative. And that's it?
That's it.
All right. The chair, in the interest of not keeping us here all night, has no items that weren't covered by someone else already, so the only thing I'll do is take a moment of personal privilege to wish my husband, Nick, a happy 20th wedding anniversary, so...
Continue as well.
Thank you. And with that, I will take a motion.
Soon.
All right, moving to adjourn.